I just had one correction with the name of the newspaper. I think you had Nemasket Times and it should be Nemasket Week.
Week.
Is week, not weekly. Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the secretary's report of August 10th with the addition correction of the name of the newspaper?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed, the minutes passed. And will be online before you know it, right?
Yes.
Okay, we are now going into the director's part of the meeting and this would be the financial report for the library.
Since you just met on the 10th and we did the first fiscal year 24 report, there's really not a whole lot of difference from a couple of weeks ago. At this point, really just regular invoicing that's happening. There actually hasn't been another payroll. It's a payroll week this week, so the next report will have more reflected. But yeah, I really, there's no, no issues of concern.
Can you just remind me?
And water still is.
I know you said the repair and maintenance office equipment. That's at 94%. I know you said it was something we.
That is that we pay for the PC support upfront for the entire year. So it's really, it, that line carries pretty much that. And there'll be quarterly maintenance for the public copier. So, but that, the 133 will cover that difference. So it will pretty much be at 100% by the end of the year. But the ones that are up high and the same thing as like the dues and subscription line looks like, oh yeah, but that's the sales assessment. It's a one time a year, usually upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year. So the, the ones that are, look like they're almost expended, there's really no concern with that.
Yeah, I know you had said that and I just couldn't remember what you had said.
The only other thing that is outstanding is we still don't know if the balance is in the gift, one of the gift accounts.
No, and I, I had tried to make arrangements to find that out before this point, but the town treasurer was doing training for like these couple of weeks and the town accountant is planning for the audit that happened. So the timing was not good to try to have it all coordinated by the time I stop full time. But if, you know, we're moving to having me assist you all with the interim, there may still be time after the audit, like after they're done with that busy season to maybe put this together before I, before you appoint my successor.
So is this something they're going to give us automatically or do we have to request it?
The, I would, who?
Total, the totals I need.
Well, the totals, the library director has a sheet, you know, like I, I had a worksheet locally. They report, the town accountant sends reports. We have to request them.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so it's, the monthly regular appropriated budget reporting comes automatically. I tended to ask for the special accounts on a quarterly basis to be able to, to update. Some of what happens with those is they, the ones that earn interest, there's somewhat of a delay in them getting that information. It's not like in real time where the appropriated budget, they pay and invoice the amount that they see as immediate. The banking is a little bit of a delay and I do request those special accounts.
So do we use any money out of the account this year?
Out of the.
The service account.
The service account, no. Because the, Theresa did some programming out of the HCA charitable contributions of the post agreement, post community agreement funding that is under the control of the Board of Selectmen funded a lot of the same.
Summary.
This, yeah, the same programming that Theresa tended to ask for service funding. So between the Friends and the HCA, that was covered.
And we do have on that account, we have to wait, wait until money is over, over a certain amount. At this point, we've been there.
Right, so that's, that's the, that's the part that needs to be clarified. So there's an existing Vanguard account, which is the one that has, had to go up over a certain threshold before the trustees could use any of the funding. That did, I want to say back in 16 or 17, it went over that threshold point and then the trustees were allowed to start taking out funding to use, which what I understood was that money was coming out of Vanguard and then going into a separate account to then be used by the library. So the original principal was still intact and whole.
Well, it's more than the principal, it's the principal and the amount up to where we, the level that we could start to use it yet.
And then what happened at some point is the losses in the Vanguard account started to be reflected in the town account. And so it looked like the service funding was going down, but I was trying to, this is the part where I'm meeting with the town accountant and getting the bank account records from the treasurer to see what the history was, is that it really should have been the Vanguard was there and it should have been accounted for separately. Any money above 50 should have been, we'll call it like culled off and put.
Into that other.
Into the other account. At first, I think it was going into the general fund, then eventually there was another interest-bearing account created at Eastern Bank. So the accounting from the tr, the account accountant's office, I don't think it reflected all of the different pieces because that's where I say the, the losses that started happening in Vanguard at some point when, you know, the whole, everything, like all investment accounts started to go down, we started to see the original amount that we thought we had to work with was service funding that should have been whole for the library to use, started to have the losses in the Vanguard account reflected in it. But I don't, but the original principal amount and any earnings were not reflected in this other account. So they, they should have always been separate and they were in the beginning and then something happened at some point when the change in treasurers happened, I believe. So like we had a, the existing Deb Kenny was the treasurer for a long time. When she retired, then there was somebody in the interim and now we have a newly appointed person. And things, things just got lost in translation.
Well, that's an unusual account for the town.
Right, so this is the part of, I had met with them last year to try to bring everybody up to speed, but then we have to find the bank records to show that change, those changes that happened.
When the change.
Because I never received any kind of documentation from the treasurer when any changes were made to any of those accounts. Like I got one deposit slip, I think from the very original money that moved from Vanguard to the library being able to use it. And then any changes beyond that, they're not reflected in anything that I have. So it's like the money is there, it's just really getting the accountant, town accountant's account in line with what.
Okay, so we have that file?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions about the financial report? Now hearing that, we'll move on to the director's report, Program Services and Collections.
So summer reading is done, it ended, yay, last week, I know, I shouldn't be so excited. Oh, we're sad, summer reading's over.
We always are.
Yes, it was a very busy summer. Definitely back to regular business. There were 300, over 300 children who participated in summer reading and over 40 teens that registered. So there was a lot of participation, we could tell in terms of foot traffic. We're, we're noticing for sure this week that people are off doing other vacationing and it's a lot quieter in here, but that's okay, we need the downtime, we're getting ready for school year. So Ms. Teresa introduced music time on Wednesday mornings, it was very popular. This is like a slightly modified program from Story Hour. Story Hour focuses on building early literacy skills. This really was about trying to enhance the fine and gross motor skills. There is a little bit of early literacy and phonics in there, but it's things like hand-eye coordination and sequencing, things that are referred developmentally. It was to try to maybe catch the ones that are younger, that aren't quite ready for story time yet because you, you need the certain ability to focus on what's going on in Story Hour, but to kind of get moving and develop some of those other skills. And it was popular, so she's going to run it in the fall, again on Wednesday mornings and starting in October. And Ms. Teresa wanted to recognize Alyssa Ferreira. She's another person on staff who really helped this year, helped Ms. Teresa with the Summer Read program. And she took an initiative to provide coverage down in the children's area and helped in set up and cleaning up from programs. And we also had our usual group of fantastic team volunteers. We can't really do what we do without them, so.
Right.
As far as the adult side, Sally Spooner was here on August 10th. The weather did not cooperate in terms of doing much outside work on trying to find monarch butterfly eggs and chrysalises and things. She had brought one in because I think she had found one, I don't know if it was here or somewhere, but just to show as an example to people. But there were over 20 people who attended that, yeah, it was a nice summertime showing.
The next morning, a woman drove up and she was all excited and she's like, I'm, I'm just here, I know you're close, I'm just here looking for chrysalises. They said, I can take the leaf, I'm going to take it home. And I've already had a butterfly. It's like, wow, that was fast.
It's great to see somebody enthusiastic about a program.
And we've got programs planned, I've only got September so far represented in here. So we planned for a speaker to come in to talk about coffee, different.
That would have been great in October.
I know, we're doing the historical commission program, but that's all right, it's a good weekend.
Beverages, yeah.
We're doing beverages. And so we're doing the history of beverages, starting with water and moving our way through.
Yes, you're right.
Maybe you can come give a plug.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I want to see what you have. Coffee lovers at my house.
So this will, right, it's going to review all things coffee and it's, will be supported by the Friends of the Library.
Thank the Friends of them.
Yep. And there'd be also a program to kind of introduce folks to Medicare and how to choose the plan that's best for them. Now, this is being led, this is a community-led program. So a Lakeville resident, Kathy Barneyak, who is vice president of Stoner and Company, will be here to offer her expertise to the community about basically providing information to them.
What is Stoner and Company?
It may be a company that manages different kinds of Medicare accounts, but you know, this is not a selling program. This is primarily a, here's what's available to you, because she has the expertise in doing it. And there's no, you know, there'll be no obligation for anyone to provide their information or to pay for it. And it's just, if people are interested and want to learn about it, the opportunity is there.
Building grounds.
So we're off of fire marshal duty, which is the pan. Take that hat off.
Stand down.
Yeah, it's like stand down from fire marshal duty, but there are still pieces of the fire panel that need to be addressed and replaced, so we're waiting on quotes for that.
So is Paul?
Paul will have to take.
Paul knee, who's the building facilities manager, will be in charge of that? Okay, great. Any other items?
So the main point for the other items is that I completed the forms for the state for you all. So the ARIS is the annual report information survey that we have to do. You signed it every year. So those are typically due by mid-August and the state aid forms generally are done later. So the state aid forms are about reporting financials. So what you had appropriated from the town, what you expended in different areas, from salaries to materials and, and all of that. I did them early this year, so everything is done for you. So they both were submitted on the 17th of August, they're done, so you don't have to worry about it. The library did meet all of the requirements, so I anticipate that you'll be certified within the first round of libraries that will go before the board. That won't happen until, at least for the state aid, until after October, yeah. Because the forms generally aren't due until October. But they report on the closing fiscal year, so fiscal year 23 had already finished up at the end of June, so I had all the information already and just as soon as the form opened, it was like, okay, I'll put it all in and it's done.
Okay, Friends of the Library.
Friends will not meet until September. Their next scheduled meeting is Monday, September 11th because of Labor Day. They normally meet on the first Monday, but the, the holiday falling there, they'll meet on Monday, September 11th.
And that's the same time as.
Half hour before.
Half hour before the coffee's.
Probably my second.
Okay, and the Great Ponds Library, Great Ponds Gallery in the library.
Okay, so then, yeah, there's a new exhibit, it went up at the tail, end of July, from a Lakeville resident, I believe. Jacqueline Meduris, it's a photography exhibit. I just realized there's an E there. In my report.
She's bound to be used to it.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fixed everywhere else. So her name does not have an E on it and I think I had probably already put this into the report at some point, but we've since fixed it on the website and all the press that's gone out.
It's dynamic too.
It is, right, it's, it's beautiful.
The photos are great, yeah.
Gorgeous exhibits.
It's just so, the fish, the fish are so neat too, carp.
I think the way that it's printed, they, they're printed on that metal or the, they just pop. It's, it's very different, very different.
So if anybody hasn't seen it, they should get in to see it before September 30th.
Right, it's up till the end of September.
Okay. Any questions for the director? We have statistics. And we have new people, 86 new people getting library cards, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think, I, I haven't analyzed the patron registrations, but they're definitely up and up and up. I feel like every month we just, but summertime is also our busy time to have people coming back into the library. So, you know, folks that maybe, I, I think people are still coming back from COVID where like they kind of went away and then they're coming back and/or new people moving into town. I think a lot of people have moved to this area. Mm-hmm. And then they're coming in and exploring what we have available. But I, I'd have to say registrations are busy and definitely up. And one new category that we will start counting is the genealogy visits. So Cindy Souza is assisting people with ancestry. It's being done on an appointment basis, so there's a little place on the website to make an appointment with her, right there online, and I will start counting it. And what I'm also doing is breaking out class visits for the children's side of things. So we want to make sure that that's represented, but it's not really a program when she has classes from ExaLops that come and visit, that it's a busy time and it gets children into the library, exposure to the collection. She assists the teachers with making sure the students have library cards, like it's a good activity for the library in terms of promoting and to make sure that the children who live here, the residents, like know what we have to offer them. But it's, it doesn't really fall under programming per se, so I'm, I'm treating it as a class visit. So I will start, that's kind of represented there. To make sure that it's reflected that that's happening without including programming.
Any questions, comments? Okay, then we're going to go into the library director's search update. I sent the Board of Selectmen a letter on August 17th and I believe they acted on it at their meeting, but I haven't heard who the appointee is. So we asked them basically to either select one of their own members or designate a representative to serve on the committee. So, here we go. Currently, we have three trustees, the three of us who are serving. We have, um, the Friends of the Lakeville Public Library, which is Maria Martin, has agreed to serve. We have two individuals who will be members at large or citizens at large, and they are Paul Malidi and Randy Swan. They are also happen to be former library trustees, which is nice, somebody with an understanding of the process. And I've also served on committees where we've done some selection before. So the only thing other than the Board of Selectmen's individual who would just will automatically go onto the committee is we said that we would like somebody from the staff. And I sent a email to everyone on the staff and we had four responses. So the individuals that we need to consider, the first was Alyssa, said that she'd like to serve, then Pammy, Teresa, and Diana said that she would serve if we actually needed a person. So I thanked her for that and clarified, but she said she'd also do anything for us. So we want to keep her in mind too, because she's a long, I think she's the longest, she and Carol are the longest serving members of the staff.
Diane was before Carol.
Right.
Diane is probably the, the two longest.
Members, and then it's Teresa. So the question is, who do we pick?
I know, you're looking at me.
High decision. Teresa's served before and she is the only other person who has professional status?
Yes.
Who has a degree in library science and certified. So, what is your pleasure?
I would say from my own opinion, I would think Teresa would be the best choice because of what you just said. She is sort of the next in line, if you will, of as far as library in charge.
She probably has more of an idea of what the job entails than the other library staff.
Specialized service, they're in specialized.
But I also say that too, because I think all of them would be great choices.
Yeah, I think they were.
To find the one thing that would differentiate.
Very nice of all of them to offer their time for this. I agree, I, I think probably Teresa would be the best choice of the four.
Can we have that in a form of a motion?
I would move to have Teresa as the staff volunteer or on the search committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, input? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll, I will contact personally the other two, three and speak to them. If, I'm not sure if they're all in today. But anyways, I'll say thank.
Everyone but Diane. Diane is really only here Monday, Tuesdays.
So I'll talk to Pammy and Teresa and also to Alyssa. Thank you, okay, so we're going to formulate the committee now, the only blank place we have is who the Selectmen rep would be if, the, I, understanding was if they did not have the time individually, if they would appoint someone, that would be okay with us, so we can move forward. So the next item is discuss impossible vote on posting for the library director position. So here we have.
Do you need Nancy, just as a point of order, do you need a vote to approve the official committee or the search committee?
It's, it's still pending with the.
Okay, I didn't know if we could do it with.
Okay, so why don't we have a motion to, yes, thank you, Patrick. Is there a motion to approve the existing interim search committee?
Some of.
For the director? I'm not interim, the search committee for the director?
So.
As, as listed? I'll give you the complete list, Ruth, for the minutes. Okay, so it would be a representative from the Board of Selectmen, Maria Martin, who's the president of the Friends of the Lakeville Public Library, Teresa Mira as children's librarian, members at large, Paul Malidi and Randy Swan, and trustees, Ruth, Patrick and myself. So there's a second?
Oops, second.
Yes.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me, thank you. So we have two votes, all right. Now, the next one is the posting. Internal, we have to post the position internally.
It's the town's policy practice to post internally for one week. So if it goes today, it would suggest posting today through next Wednesday and then it can go external as of August 31st, so.
Now, this is for any paid position, appointed position?
Yes, I, I know. Technically, there are a handful of positions in town that do not fall on the classification wage and personnel policy, which is the town administrator, fire chief, police chief and library director. So I think technically it doesn't need to be posted internally, but it has been consistently the town's practice to do that because it is required for the union positions, it is required for all of the other positions. So even though I think these, those, the library director falls outside of that, just in the interest of best practice, if there are any.
Because all our other positions have always been posted for a week before.
Right, everything, everything that I have had to fill has been posted internally for a week to provide opportunity for any internal candidates. I mean, I think given, given the education and qualifications that are necessary for this position, I don't know that you, I mean, that, there may be internal people, but Teresa would be the one who, but if she's interested in serving on the committee, she.
The assumption, yes.
The assumption is that she's not interested in applying for the position. However, to follow the practice, you will post it internally.
I just want to make sure we clarify that. Okay, qualifications, you may, a master's degree in library and information science and a program accredited by the American Library Association, must hold a professional certificate of libraryship from MBLC, which is the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and at least five years of professional experience, three years of which should be in administration or supervisory capacity, preferably in a public library environment. So that are the qualifications that we have. And then everything will be on the website, the town website, so that it can be viewed by the public. Know anyone who would be interested in coming and working with us, let us know. So then we go to the, is the next one just the?
It, it's a similar posting, except that it would be the one that is intended to go outside. So nothing has changed in terms of the position and hours, the duties or qualifications, it's really just the date range. So the internal is for one week, the external, you would have a posting start date and then the posting closing, I am commending to you all to just say until filled.
Which is what it says.
Yeah, I think you run into some problems when you pick an arbitrary end date, sometimes you'll just post for two or three weeks and then, you know, begin your review, but I think you will begin your review as soon as you start getting applications. Although that'll take some time probably to put your committee meetings together anyway, so I'd say after the 31st to start receiving. The applications will be directed to the, the library, to the library director. The applications will be directed to the, the library, to the library director search committee at the library or by email. The library has a general town account, so it's library@lakevilleMA.org. In terms of receiving those, so that way they're in a, kind of a central place. They'll come physically here, if anybody drops off paper materials, we'll have to designate an area where the staff can put those if anybody drops off, or they end up coming through the mail. And then the library account is, will be checkable by whoever's chairing the committee.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve both the internal and the general?
The only suggestion that I have to you, I guess, is whether or not you want to, at the last meeting, you, we had talked about the range, like trying to post with a range, and then the, the recommendation that has come out since then. So the posting has the salary that is currently what, you know, what I'm earning.
We have, we can't post for more than we already have in the budget, so that's what, why the amount is there.
But rather than using a range, like, we had talked about the eighty, eighty to a hundred percent, that the rec, the suggestion was to just put it as what it is now, and then you will have to just revisit what happens after you receive applications. Because some of it is, since the last meeting, was able to get the, the list of comparable towns. So the town, Lakeville is undergoing a classification study right now for the other non-union positions. The library director was not originally included, but I received information yesterday that the board of selectmen would like to include the library director in the classification study. So it was supposed, it was always intended for non-union positions, but it was not for, I think for those four, that.
It's just going to be additional.
But I think in light of this information, you know, and you're right, I should have probably watched the meeting yesterday to see who was appointed and see where that discussion came from.
So the information that we have here is based on population?
What happened is the town, the town had a list generated of communities that it should compare itself to. So when you're, when you're undergoing a classification study, you want to try to get apples to apples. So you can't, you know, it's difficult for Lakeville, like, Lakeville's not going to compare itself to Boston, right? It's a very different community, population size, the makeup in terms of demographics of the community. They look at things like median house value and earnings. There's a whole list of criteria, and what that, the firm that the town is working with has come up with a list of, oh, I don't have the original here, well, maybe I do, I don't know. It's maybe like fifteen different, well, I don't see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, yeah, so fifteen communities that are most like Lakeville to be able to start looking at, to be ap, doing apples to apples with town positions. So I included all of those communities on this list, and what I did is I pulled out what information is available to us about library director salaries. So this is, the most recent information we have is for fiscal year twenty-three, for the MBLC. So part of those forms that I just did in terms of reporting, we're able to look at. But it's a year behind, it's not in real time. So what I did was saying, okay, I have FY twenty-three, assuming for here in Lakeville, the department heads were granted a three percent increase. I just assumed that across the board, I don't really know if this, the, so the FY twenty-four is an educated guess as far as where the other libraries might be at. I think now that I, now that the information that the library director position will be within the classification study, you will likely have more information to work with by the time you get to possible candidates. Because what will happen is they will actually get that information from, directly from the communities that Lakeville is similar to. So right now, it's like I, I've done educated guessing, but the, the comp study will actually solicit that.
This is twenty twenty-four?
Solicit that information directly from the communities that are most similar to Lakeville. Now, I've included others in here because just thinking about who you may have for possible candidates, that there are some smaller communities within sales that are neighboring. So you would have somebody who would have an MLS, have all of the qualifications and experience having run a, you know, smaller library, but is looking to make a stretch to come to a larger community. I, I don't know. So it has, go ahead, sorry.
My question is, under, whether or not they have an assistant director?
Mm-hmm.
If it says not available, does that mean that they don't have one, or there's just no information?
Right, means that they don't have one.
Don't have one, okay.
Because some places are small enough that they wouldn't, for example, even here, Lakeville does not have an assistant director position. And so other libraries do not, but then there are some that do. So looking at a situation where, okay, it's a slightly larger library, so for example, like Whitman is there on the list. It's about halfway down, a little bit above, just to pick one as an example. So that one is a slightly larger community than Lakeville because their population is just over fifteen thousand. But it's a situation where there's a director where, who might be earning less than here already, and there's an assistant director position. So I, you know, I, some of this is just looking at, like, would there even be, is anyone potentially going to apply? Or you might have people who are not coming from this list. This was just looking at the comparable, you know, communities, looking within sales at other small, slightly smaller than Lakeville communities. But there could be people looking from other parts of the state that have the education and qualifications experience to apply for this position here. Because this only goes out so far, but.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, sure.
Any questions on the listing?
Well, I, I just wanted to say that last time we did vote to use the eighty to a hundred percent.
Right, so we're going to have to change that.
Yes.
All right, so the new in-house listing, and the job listing that's going to go out to the public, have a change in the wage line, where we, instead of, we were doing eighty percent to a hundred percent, and the recommendation that came down from, I believe, the town administrator, was that we just put the top mount that we have budgeted already with a plus or minus, and in, that it's a non-union position and the salary would be commensurate with experience, which means it could be less, and maybe it could be more if we could find some money to do that.
That, I think, just remains to be seen.
But, but legally, we can only post for what we actually have available at this time. So the motion, could entertain a motion that says that we would accept the two postings with the change under wages at the top amount of, that we have available?
So I would move to rescind the wages vote from August tenth and approve the job postings as presented.
Okay, second?
Second. Would you please state that again?
It's going to rescind the.
To rescind the vote, the wages vote of August tenth. And approve the job postings as listed.
Second.
I think that covers what.
Yes.
We were trying to do.
Yeah.
Because at the time, I didn't have the, you know, the comparable list to offer you any additional information.
And we also, people are vacation and stuff like that, so that was the reason we went with that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, so thank you, Jamie, for doing that too. The next thing would be, um, do we want to, is there anything we want to discuss on the job description?
No, I just included it in the packet for you all to see. I, I think that the way that it's written as it stands, it should just be used at this point to post, it will, it will be attached to the posting to provide more detail about the job, but the essential duties, the other required responsibilities, qualifications and skills. It's all listed there in terms of what is necessary for the position. Some of the newer positions that have been, I guess, established since this description was written, with, this one was written in twenty fifteen prior to my coming. There is some slight modification in how the wording for qualifications and skills and experience and training is done, but it's really just a matter of language on the headings. The content itself hasn't changed, so I think the fact that the process for revising the job description, you could potentially do that after, but I, I think in the interest of time, there's, just to use the existing position description, because it's really, it's not. It's, it matches pretty much exactly what is out there right now for the head, the director of HR. It was done similar timing, and the language is the same.
There were two that were posted, what you said about a week ago?
Yeah.
Holland.
Uh, Holber.
Holber, yeah, okay.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, I guess that drives the decision to also put it up.
Going to the higher, yeah. Okay, so, we don't have a motion on the floor.
No, that was more informational.
Okay, that was informational.
That will go behind that posting, which is a summary, but the full description is always provided.
I have a question, when the, when this goes outside of the town on the thirty-first, does it, at that point, go to mass library?
Yeah. Just as a, who posts to the MBLC, and will the town's HR post, would one of us post? I mean, I'm happy to do it.
I think, given the circumstances of the head of HR leaving as of the thirty-first, that it, it should, that's, I think that's his last day, so he could probably post on the town website, but I just assume that between you and I, working on.
We take that responsibility.
I'm happy to post, but I know each town has their own procedures.
Yeah, because the town, the town uses its own website, and I think the human resources director has been posting on Indeed or something like that. But I, that's because we're fortunate that we have our own library board, like, library job board, which will go out to people locally who can, you know, fill the position without.
So with the town post, we'll be posting the in-house one, which says posting closing, closes on the thirtieth. So if there's anyone interested, who has the qualifications currently employed by the town, they would be able to do that. But then, will it then carry the second posting, which is the public one, saying it's open-ended?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just so that it, everybody has the same information. Anything else further on the posting for the position?
No.
Okay, then let's move on to discussion impossible vote on the plan for the library director coverage during the interim period. Members of the committee have done some research on the possibilities, and also we referred back to what happened eight years ago when Olivia left and before Jamie was hired. So, um, do you want to talk about it?
Um, sure, so I am happy to serve in that capacity for the board, where essentially I will be stepping down from full-time library director for the town of Lakeville, but then staying on in a part-time capacity for you all to make sure that the administrative underpinnings are still happening. So things like making sure that materials are still ordered, you know, some things, some minor day-to-day operational things, I have been able to delegate at this point to staff, so that way they're done without having to.
Be in the building?
Be in the building, right, that, they, they don't need to be waiting until the interim person is available. But there's some other things that are not easily delegated to other individuals because of basically training and trying to keep them, how should I say, kind of, everyone here already has a full-time job. And, but there are just some things that I think would be better suited for the interim person to do. So selecting and ordering library materials for adults, administering the library budget, so managing, still managing those sheets, preparing invoices and deposits, processing the payroll, coordinating staff scheduling. And then I've included in here as well, like, serving as a consultant on library facility and technology issues, because that's kind of the big, that's really just, I, I wouldn't necessarily be here to manage all the things day-to-day. Paul is going to have to be the point person for things on-site. But as far as some of that institutional knowledge and help with looking at what's going on to make recommendations, serving in that capacity. As well as potentially maintaining the regular library standings to know about, you know, issuing reports and keeping track of statistics, because I feel like that. I do it on a monthly basis, so that way it just is always there. And then by the end of the year, you have all the information that you need to compile.
And that would include any end-of-the-year reports that needed to go in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Things like that, that just wouldn't necessarily be easily delegated to other people to have to learn how to do. And as far as, like, there does not appear to be, the, because there was some discussion of, like, floater staff, and it's like, there really isn't, that could either be just someone and pick up, pick up how they're.
Could take over these responsibilities, okay. Any questions or discussion for a motion?
So this really, these are amendments to the, to the contract. Now, what I don't know, and there was some discussion yesterday, is if this is the way to accomplish it or a separate small contract, like, but that, like, hopefully that.
We need to have something in place tomorrow. So if we sign this and then we find that we need to modify it or have another contractual thing set up for the town, then we will adopt it. Is that agreeable? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the library director employment agreement amendments
So moved.
As specified on the page. And just so that people know, that the period of time will be amended to provide employees shall serve from the date, which is tomorrow?
Well, and it would be the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Because I'm technically not done with my library director, full-time library directorship until the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
My resignation was the twenty-fifth.
So twenty-sixth until such time as a successor is appointed, which means that we hire a new director. Jamie's outlined the employment duties, the compensation salary is amended to provide for the hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars sixty cents per hour. Hours of work would be amended to provide work for four to ten hours per week, and employee is not available for fringe benefits.
Yeah, not eligible, because there, there's language in the existing contract about, you know, sick time and vacation and pension, and all of that really comes to a close. This is really just.
On the twenty-sixth.
Right, it's like, that's like the twenty-fifth, it's like, I, you know, I would no longer earn vacation time and things. But that's where, um, we have to kind of finish up the full-time library directorship. And this hourly wait rate is really the same hourly rate that I earn now.
Currently have.
The contract is an annual salary, so it's translated into an hourly amount.
Ruth, when you do the minutes, would you put in the, through, the four sections into the minutes?
I will.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
A second? Okay, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for doing this. Transition will be so much easier for everybody here and the public as well. So we appreciate this very, very much. We, we need to select another meeting date. So since you're going to be with us, or on Zoom or something, we just need to.
I haven't even thought of that option, right, I guess, like, I could.
Who's going to know how to set up Zoom?
I'll set up the Zoom, then I'll go home. No, you're right, I think, I think.
Run it over the night before.
Included within the four to ten will be some, whatever I can manage in terms of, and Wednesday mornings actually is the best time slot for me too, personally, so.
Why I pick it for you.
Yeah, you know, it kind of works out where that is probably the most feasible option for me moving forward.
So we've been meeting, oh, except for this month, when we've met consistently. We've usually been meeting the third Wednesday. we've usually been meeting the third Wednesday, does that still work, the twentieth?
Yes.
Um.
Or is that?
There is a sales board meeting that day, but again, if we have to meet, we need to meet.
Can we move it up?
Well, we can.
Two, three, oh, we've been meeting the fourth Wednesday, actually.
Fourth Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
Because the sales has been a, that, the third Wednesday is a standing meeting for the directors of sales.
At sales?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we've been doing either before or after.
After that, so the twenty-seventh of September, which is.
Twenty-seventh is good.
At nine AM?
Would there be any reason to go to meet sooner?
Um, I think I have a doctor's appointment that day.
I will not be here on the thirteenth, so that leaves, either we have to meet on a Tuesday, or if it's gonna be that week, um, earlier.
Or the other piece is you could meet when you can meet, and I just maybe won't be at that particular one.
Particular one?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you wanna switch to a Tuesday, I would have to do a Tuesday evening, that's all.
Tuesday evening's fine with me.
So Tuesday, the nineteenth?
That's the one Tuesday I can't, that's the one Tuesday I can't, master plans.
When you get busy people together.
Do we go back to the?
Thursday?
Twentieth, and then, cause what time is it now? And this was a long.
Nine fifty-six, usually about an hour.
Cause that meeting is right over there at ten, so if you did nine.
Yeah, I mean, the sales meeting is at ten, so if worse comes to worse, I can set up the Zoom here, or if they're allowing meeting in person.
So leave it on the, leave it on the twentieth.
Like, ten minutes?
We could do it eight-thirty.
Yeah.
Is that too early?
No.
No? Is that too early? Okay, eight-thirty on the twentieth?
Okay.
Sorry.
So this would be September twentieth, which is a Wednesday at eight-thirty, okay, great. Do you wanna tell her what we have for her? We have a card for you. We have something else for you. Thank you very much, we really appreciate the eight years, not gonna get weepy, this is from the. We have given the, um, we have named the gazebo in honor of Jamie, who's eaten many lunches out there in good weather, and we sincerely appreciate all the effort that she's done for the community and for the library staff and for us as Board of Trustees, we really appreciate everything. Not gonna cry.
Yeah.
Cry Patrick.
No.
Anybody, anything else further, anyone like to add?
I just wanna thank you for all of your support all these years, you know, it, um, this job really, it's a, I mean, Patrick can attest to it, it's, it's a labor of love, like, you're, it's a job for you, but at least for me personally, it's part of the fabric of who I am as a person, and so it, you know, it's, I'm really gonna miss this place.
You know we appreciated you?
I know, I know you did, I appreciate it, all of you, and I will miss it.
We do wish you well, even on the Tuesday.
But I feel like, well, we're just gonna transition out, and so even that's what I said to the staff, like, the staff did a nice spread for me yesterday, which I appreciate, um, and so we, we said our goodbyes, but it's really just goodbye for now in that I will not be around, um, as much or all the time, but it's not really the final goodbye until you all appoint a successor.
I appreciate you filling the interposition for us.
Yes.
That we need to do. Any further comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
At nine fifty-eight?
Oh, I, before we, do we need to sign this today?
Okay. Is there a second?
I moved.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.